Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, December third, two thousand and twenty-four. And Mr. Secretary, you take roll call, please.
Commissioner Vandermeulen.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Vice Chair Lamone.
Present.
Chair Edsel.
Here. And then if you'll stand for the flag salute, Commissioner Vandermeulen will lead us.
Thank you. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is a consent calendar. And I'm, I understand that Commissioner Lamone has a question on one of the items on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the Commission by law's proposed amendments and some proposed revisions to those amendments. And, and to confirm, we haven't reviewed these amendments yet, right? This is the first time we're looking at them?
That, that's correct. So, from what I understand, you want to poll that item and then go ahead and act on the balance of the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, should we vote on the other consent items and then test us, or just wait and see if the questions are answered?
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll address that one out.
Okay. Okay, so we're polling the item B off the consent calendar. And with that being said, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with items A and C.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Vandermeulen and seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Please vote.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamone?
Yes.
And Chair Edsel.
Yes.
Okay, so procedurally, how do we handle that now? B is we have the, the presentation on it. You pull it off the calendar and do the presentation?
So, we don't have a staff presentation on this item, but we're, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You want to do that now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, yeah, I have a couple of questions and then some proposed revisions to the amendments, really just to streamline the language. And I apologize for not submitting these earlier. I wasn't able to review them until this evening. Okay, so on the first page, no, it's not the first page. Yes, first page. Under C, duties of officers and staff. Under one chair. I request to remove his office and replace it with the office.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What was?
Instead of saying his office, replace it with the office.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And then on vice chair. Just that, again, that, that first part to the first sentence. Replace it with if the chair is absent or an unable to act, comma, the vice chair will act as chair and perform those duties. It just takes place of the his, her, and his multiple times.
Okay.
And then D, on two special meetings, there's, you're, we're striking, the proposed amendment is to strike and study sessions. And I'm curious about what the distinction is between special meetings and study sessions, and if we remove study sessions, if we're limiting something that we may need in the future.
So, on, on that one, the, the study sessions would be to study a particular item, which we, we could just have us, you know, conduct a special meeting to do that. Instead of calling it a, a study session, we just have another meeting of the planning commission.
It's just a special session that studies, so it's just unnecessary language. Thank you. Under four A. It's a meeting called to order and the amendment is by the chair, and then in parentheses, or if necessary, comma, the vice chair. But there's also, it's also possible to have another acting temporary chair if the vice chair isn't there either. So, again, just to streamline, streamline the language. Instead of saying, or if necessary, the vice chair, I propose, I propose stating, or if necessary, the acting chair. And my next question is under four J, council referral. Again, I'm curious about what this practice has been in the past and what the impact is of removing it.
The council referral would be if, if they, if the city council asks the planning commission to study a, a subject or an item and report back. But it's, it's not needed now because if that was to happen, we'd just bring it to the planning commission as a staff item for you guys to consider and make a recommendation or comment on that item.
Okay, so we're not eliminating anything. Okay. And under five, order of public hearings. The proposed amended language says, in conducting the public hearing, that involves a project applicant. So, my question is whether there are ever hearings that involve people other than project applicants or whether all of our hearings are limited to project applicants?
It's either applicant or staff. Staff could bring forth an item.
Okay.
But this is the process, just if, if we have like a development application or a request from the public or an applicant.
Great. Okay, thank you. That is all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I don't know if you want to have any discussion about that. I thought they were kind of minor clarifications that, that make the document better. And so, unless we have any discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve this item B, the amended planning commission bylaws, as corrected.
I'll, I'll move to, to approve with the, with the amendments suggested by Commissioner Lamone.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. And to approve item B as, as edited, as pointed out by Commissioner Lamone. So, please vote.
Can I share Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamone?
Yes.
And Chair Edsel.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, then we, next item is the public comments, and this is a time for people to come and speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. And under this category, I got one speaker's card tonight, and hopefully I won't mispronounce the last name, but Ronald J. Aru- Aruho. I'm sorry if I butchered that.
Good evening, Chair Ronald Aruho.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Chair Edsel, Vice Chair Lamone, fellow planning commission members and staff. My name is Ronald Aruho, Chair of the Planning Commission for the City of Oxnard. And in accordance with the rules and procedures of the Oxnard Planning Commission, I am speaking not only for myself, but also on behalf of the Oxnard Planning Commission in my remarks to you today. I am requesting your support in our commission's effort to allow stipends for our members. I am currently spearheading an effort to allow our planning commissioners to receive stipends for their time serving on the commission with support from the Oxnard Planning Commission that has been approved in the form of a resolution directed to the Oxnard City Council. I believe that you all serving on the planning commission for Camarillo understand that planning commissioners serve an important part of the process in regards to the development of the city. I'm not sure if you're aware that of the nine of ten cities in Ventura County with a planning commission separate from its governing board, plus the county's planning commission, Oxnard, the largest city in Ventura County, does not, is one of two that does not provide compensation for its members. I'm using the time since our planning commission passed a resolution in August and then agendized to a future agenda by the Oxnard City Council back in September to gather support from fellow planning commissions and their members in Ventura and the surrounding counties of Kern, Santa Barbara, and Los Angeles that do receive a stipend allowance to give their own perspective to our governing board that stipends for the planning commission are reasonable, logical, and in the best interests of the city. Given that you are aware of the time and energy commitment to serve your city, I'm asking for your support of the Oxnard Planning Commission members when it comes before the full city council sometime in the next few months. I'll be contacting this commission via email in the near future with all the relevant information and potential avenues of support so that you have the fullest knowledge to assist us, if you wish to, in our efforts. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to keeping you apprised. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else present that wants to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and go right into their next item under public hearings, D, which is CUP four thirty-two. The Arco Mini Mart and Alcohol Cells, and we have a staff report.
Hello?
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Edsel and members of the planning commission. I'd like to present a request from Arco for approval of a conditional use permit, or CUP, to allow for a mini mart with the off sale of beer and wine at an existing fuel station at six fifty Arneel Road. This is just south of the Central Plaza Shopping Center, which is currently being remodeled. This is a view of the site from Arneel Road facing northeast. And this is the site plan for the project area. There is no site work proposed as part of the CUP. This is the existing floor plan. A large portion of the building is an auto service center, which is not currently in, in operation. The proposed floor plan shows the new mini mart with alcohol display areas highlighted in yellow. The new customer area of the mini mart is proposed to be one thousand one hundred fifty-six square feet with the cashier area relocated to the back of the store. The floor plan shows fifty-four square feet of floor area dedicated to alcohol displays, which is less than five percent of the total customer area. The alcohol displays are in the back of the building, near the cashier area, which naturally provides high employee surveillance. Hours of alcohol sales will correspond with the store hours and any applicable state and federal regulations, as well as a Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control regulations. The request was forwarded to the Camarillo Police Department for review, and they've made recommendations relating to security, lighting, and employee training, which are included in the proposed conditions of approval. The business operator must submit a security and surveillance plan to the police department for approval before commencing the sale of alcohol. And the plan includes requirements for a video surveillance system, automatic locking rear door, and sufficient lighting to allow for the identification of customers, among other requirements. The business operator must also receive all necessary permits from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC, and must ensure that all employees selling alcoholic beverages have completed a training program approved by the ABC department for responsible sale of alcohol. The proposal is in census tract fifty-four point zero three, which encompasses the area south of Ponderosa Drive, east of Arneel Road, north of Lewis Road, and the US one-on-one highway, and west of Temple Avenue. The blue dot is the location of the service center. The number of ABC licenses in this tract currently exceeds the recommendation from the ABC department by one license. The ABC department recommends three on-sale licenses and one off-sale license in the census tract, and there are currently four on-sale and one off-sale. The city must make a finding of public convenience or necessity before the ABC department can issue licenses in over-concentrated census tracts. Staff finds the request to be of public convenience or necessity because the proposal would allow customers of the fuel station and nearby residents to purchase alcohol without traveling to another location. CUP four thirty-two is not subject to SEQA review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, class one for existing facilities, which exempts from SEQA review projects that consist of the operation of existing public or private structures involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use. This agenda item meets the criteria for this exemption because the request is limited to operational use only within existing structures and involves negligible expansion of use. Staff recommends that the commission find CUP four thirty-two exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, and adopt a resolution approving CUP four thirty-two, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, have a question of staff? Ms. Vandermeulen?
Can you go back to the first picture showing where the parking and what they're filling in and such? Or the, well, yeah, the.
This one? Or the floor plan?
Like the site plan was there.
Yes. So, they're not proposing any site work as part of the CUP?
I didn't know if they would put any parking, be able to put any parking behind it or not, but just still. But I did drive by to see if it looked like there was at least ample parking somewhere on the site. So, they do have a considerable amount of parking there on the Ponderosa side. But then the only entrance is going to be in the middle of the front, correct? There's not going to be a side entrance at all. I didn't see on the plan.
Uh, oh, to the building?
Yeah.
Uh, only the front customer entrance?
Yeah. They still have to walk a little ways to get there, but. And I didn't know if there was wide enough to put any parking next to the building, next to the side of the building or not, across from the parking spaces, but.
Uh, that's a drive aisle. They wouldn't have space to put it there.
Well, you've got the filler parts for the tanks in that area, so they have to get the trucks in and out. Okay.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, um. Well, the, is the minimum parking space number calculation the same with the new use over the previously existing use?
Uh, the, the new use does not exceed the current parking that they have.
I'm sorry?
The, the, the new layout does not exceed the current number of parking spaces that they have.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Um, first, I'd like to know who the applicant is. Okay, I have to recuse myself then from this item due to a relationship, personal relationship.
Okay. Should she leave the, yeah, you have to go.
Yeah, I wasn't able to tell from the, the documents.
Thank you. And, and I had a question. Is, are there any, uh, currently in town, are there any gas stations that are selling alcohol now in Camarillo, the entire city?
Uh, yes.
Which ones?
Uh, the Vaughn's Fuel Station.
Yeah, the one we just approved that's connected to the grocery store, but in, any others in town that?
Uh, I believe that's the only one.
Does, does anybody know?
Correct, that's the only one that we're aware of.
There's no one?
Yeah.
It's, uh, just north of this, this property.
I don't know any other questions or comments, so.
Yeah, it just makes me want to go on a tour and check them all out.
What's that?
Check all the convenience stores out at the gas stations.
Yeah, I just remember, uh, years ago that I think seven eleven applied. Were you on the commission then? Right on Arneel, and it was turned down because, you know, it was just on and, right at on and off the off-ramp. And the concern was people buy alcohol and jump on the field. This is a little more midtown, so I don't have as big of a concern about on this one, but I just wondered if there were any others in town, and I know we approved Vaughn's, but that was kind of connected to the, their whole grocery facility.
Yeah, it seemed like there was one fairly close to the freeway, the Valero out there, San Rosa Road, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, and the alcohol part of that application was denied. They went, that was a convenience store as well, and so they proceeded with that, but they were not allowed to, to sell alcohol. But I, it seemed like there was a proximity to the freeway issue with, with that.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of a concern, but maybe what we ought to do is open the public hearing and have the applicant come forward. Is that all right? Okay, thank you. So, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this, and if the applicant's present and would like to come forward?
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name is Lisette Elenas, and I'm with ERA Architects. And I'm representing the clients and the owners of the property that are here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're here if you guys have any questions for us regarding the design or, um, any aspect of the, uh, operation proposed.
You know. Yeah, in the report, did they have a, I mean, as long as the station's open, they can serve alcohol, there's not a, a stop time or that you can't sell it past?
No, it's, uh, when, when the convenience store is open, that's when, you know, sales of alcohol are, are proposed.
Do you have any questions of the applicant?
What are the hours of operation? It was probably in our packet, but I.
Hours of operation?
Usually, uh, six in the morning until ten p.m.
Six to ten, okay.
Six, I don't know if there's any ABC licensed regulations to the hours. I mean, we will comply with that if it's something different to the hours of operations that they have.
Okay.
Well, there's kind of like an improvement looks-wise visually versus what's there now and a better use of, you know, since you're not really getting any use of all of that area it would look like right now.
Yes.
A mechanic shop in, uh, around, uh, because of COVID and stuff, it was hard to hire mechanics that didn't want to work and something like that. As a result, we kind of closed that down. It's been closed down.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and we probably need you to come up and say your name for the record. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Steven Sedigian, uh, I'm the owner's son. Uh, I was just saying that our mechanic shop was operating until two thousand and twenty-one. And then, uh, w- once COVID hit, pretty much it was hard to hire people and, um, stuff like that. So, as a result, we kind of closed down the mechanic shop. So, it hasn't been operating for about a few years, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, it's going to be good use to put those three bays of mechanic shop to snack shops.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's our main goal.
Yeah, and right now, it really does look, you know, just like a rundown space.
Yeah.
It'll be an improvement, you know, in the appearance and in the use.
As part of, uh, the, what we're proposing here, um, you would see in the, on the plans too, that we're proposing a new, new storefront, new entrances, new, um, automatic entrance doors, so it's going to look, it's going to look a lot better than what it is right now.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. You guys have any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And is there anybody else present tonight that would like to speak on this agenda item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any further discussion from the commissioners? What's your, what's your pleasure?
I don't have any other questions, so.
Okay.
I don't either. It looks like a very reasonable, um, change to, to the current use. Um, makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay, so I guess we'll call for a resolution then.
All right. Resolution number PC two thousand and twenty-four dash seventeen, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo. Approving a request from Arco for a conditional use permit, CUP, for concurrent use of mini mart and sale of beer and wine with a service station at six fifty Arneel Road in the commercial plan development CPD zone, further described as CUP four three two.
I move to wait for the reading and vote to adopt.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. Uh, please vote.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yeah.
And Chair Edsel?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, and so then, uh, someone want to grab the Commissioner Lamone?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. Okay, we'll go on now to our next, uh, item, item E, CUP four thirty-four, the seventy-six gas station alcohol cells.
I'd like to present a request from seventy-six Gas Station for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the off sale of beer and wine at an existing fuel station at one hundred Los Poses Road. This is adjacent to the Mion Hotel and Conference Center, which is currently under construction, and just north of the Camarillo Premium Outlets. This is a view of the site from Park and Ride Boulevard facing northwest. And this is the site plan for the project area. There is no site work proposed as part of the CUP. This is the existing floor plan. Uh, no interior building work is proposed as part of the CUP either. The floor plan shows the existing convenience store with alcohol display areas highlighted in red. The floor plan shows one hundred and eighty square feet of floor area dedicated to, dedicated to alcohol displays out of the five thousand square foot store, which is less than four percent of the total area. The alcohol displays are in the back of the building, past to the cashier area near the front, which cap, which naturally, naturally provides high employee surveillance. Hours of alcohol sales will correspond with the store hours and any applicable state, federal, and ABC regulations. The request was forwarded to the Camarillo Police Department for review, and they've made recommendations relating to security, lighting, and employee training, which are included. which are included in the proposed conditions of approval. The business operator must submit a security and surveillance plan to the police department for approval before commencing the sale of alcohol. The plan includes requirements for a video surveillance system, automatic locking rear door, and sufficient illumination to allow for the identification of customers, among other requirements. The business operator must also receive all necessary permits from the A B C department, and must ensure that all employees selling alcoholic beverages have completed a training program approved by the A B C department for responsible sale of alcohol. The proposal is in census tract fifty-six point zero-two, which encompasses the area south of the US one-on-one highway and a portion of Pleasant Valley Road, and extends past city limits to the east, west, and south, uh, excluding the tract containing CSU Channel Islands. The blue dot is the location of the service center. Uh, the A B C department recommends five on-sale licenses and three off-sale licenses in the census tract, and there are currently thirty-four on-sale and ten off-sale. The city must make a finding of public convenience or necessity before the A B C department can issue licenses in over-concentrated census tracts. Staff finds the request to be of public convenience or necessity because the proposal would allow customers of the fuel station and nearby residents to purchase alcohol without traveling to another location. C U P four thirty-four is not subject to sequel review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, class one for existing facilities, which exempts from sequel review projects that consist of the operation of existing public or private structures involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use. This agenda item meets the criteria for this exemption because the request is limited to operational use only within existing structures and involves negligible expansion of use. Staff recommends that the commission find C U P four thirty-four exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant, pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section one five three zero one, and adopt a resolution approving C U P four thirty-four, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, start at this end, do you have any questions, Commissioner Lamont?
Yes, thank you, um, you mentioned there are thirty-four licenses in the area, is that right?
Um, thirty-four on-sale and ten off-sale.
Okay, so.
So, uh, if you want me to describe what the map is, it's a little hard to read, so this census tract, let's see where's my pointer. Uh-oh. Um. Well, the census tract is fifty-six point zero-two, it's the majority, taking up the majority of the map here. You can see, uh, tract fifty-seven is in the middle, that's CSU Channel Islands, and the green area to the top is city limits, so the majority of the census tract is area outside of the city. Uh, it's a, a pretty large tract compared to most of the other ones in the city. Uh, fifty-four point zero-three, you can see near the top was the one for the previous project.
Okay, what's the difference between on-sale and off-sale?
Uh, on-sale is for customers to drink alcohol at the location, and off-sale is for them to buy there and drink somewhere else.
So the majority of the on-sale are likely restaurants or parts of the establishments, okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Okay, how about you, Commissioner Murphy?
Now, we were commenting on the last one about proximity to the freeway. I, I do know that that was a concern with the city before, but you have contacted, you know, the police, and I'm assuming they perhaps don't have as much concern about that as they did before. Do, was the feedback that you received from the, from the police any different than the previous one that we were just considering?
Uh, the feedback was similar for both projects. They didn't have any particular comments related to the location of this one near the freeway.
Okay, all right, thanks.
How about you, Commissioner Vandermeulen?
I am a little bit more concerned about, um, the freeway access there, plus you've got whatever buildings or tenants will be going into the buildings that are associated with the, um, Hotel and Conference Center. And I was a little concerned if you go on this one to the parking, if you, can you go to the one that shows the parking lot and the building?
Uh, yes.
I think it was the next one after that.
Uh, the aerial picture, it's a little bit zoomed out.
No, it was kind of just a, there.
Oh, yes?
Yeah, because the only parking that I saw easily to go into the convenience market is kind of along the side where there's two people are standing, which was not very many parking spaces. And then, so I don't know if they're planning on, there's parking over here to the side, which I didn't know what that was for, and I saw some other parking to the other side that was all filled. And I don't know how much of that is filled with employees parking, um, for the car wash area, plus the convenience store and the gas station. So I was a little concerned with the ease of parking to get in and out and be able to utilize it.
They already have an existing convenience store, so the area that they're using for alcohol displays is already, uh, being used for other retail.
Right, except that, once they add the al, alcohol, they could be getting more people shopping.
Potentially.
So I just was a little concerned about that, as far as not maybe having enough parking to accommodate more shoppers coming in. So. And then also the unknowns about what are, what other types of businesses will be filling in right, right around that. You know, I, I would think in, on one hand, it'd be nice for people staying at the hotel if they just want to pick up something and take it back to their rooms, um, rather than buying, you know, a beverage or something, you know, in the hotel, to where there might be, uh, that might serve that type of a purpose, and therefore they wouldn't be as much to buy it and run onto the freeway, but buy something to take back to the hotel. So I think that's all I had right now.
Yeah, and I had a question on that, A B C stats are recommended versus existing? Um, so they recommended, and it seems like we far exceeded the recommendation, so, I mean, I guess that's what it is, it's just a recommendation, huh, so we're not held any, any limit on granting these, that's at our discretion, basically, or is it, the A B C have input in that? Because I mean, they recommend three, and then we have ten already, and, and the on-sale, five, and we have thirty-four.
If, uh, the, the current number of licenses exceeds the recommended number, we have to make the finding of public convenience or necessity.
Oh, if it's less than, uh, recommended, then you don't have to?
No.
Have finding, oh, I got you. Is that pretty typical in most cities that they exceed the recommended amount, is that?
I'm not sure about other cities, most tracks within our city have exceeded it.
They do, okay. Okay, no other questions, we'll open the public hearing on this item, is applicant here and like to, yeah, thanks.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Steve Rawlings. I am a consultant to United Pacific Corporation, who is the owner and the operator of, of this particular, uh, gas station. Um, I, I do want to, uh, say for the record that we concur with your staff's recommendation, and we do agree to all of, of the draft conditions of approval, uh, before you this evening. Um, I have a, 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 just a, a short statement about the company, and then I, I know that some of you had asked some questions that I, I'd like to, opportunity to address here. First of all, United Pacific is one of the actual largest, um, gas station convenience store operators in the western United States with about four hundred and fifty, um, gas stations and, and convenience stores, uh, over two hundred here in the state of California, and they currently operate with well over a hundred alcohol licenses in, in the state. I, I say this to, um, give you an idea that this is a large corporation with a lot of policies and procedures and employee training, um, and it's important to this corporation, you know, for liability reasons, but also, um, it's important for them to have a safe environment for not only their customers, but, uh, as well as their employees. They take great pride in, in knowing that they have, um, that they train, uh, their employees. I did submit, um, to, uh, Melissa, as well as the police department, kind of an overview of our safety and security protocols, um, in which, um, uh, Tom Miller indicated that was one of the more comprehensive, uh, documents that he had seen in terms of just, uh, descriptions of, of kind of how, how we handle loitering, um, how we try to make, you know, eye contact with our customers, and, and we, we do have a, a very comprehensive surveillance camera system. You know, there, there's cameras all over the place, inside and outside. This particular, um, uh, operation, it does include a car wash, um, as well as an oil change operation there. We have a lot of employees on the site at all times. This is, um, a very, very large site, very large store, five thousand square feet. Um, we are asking to only dedicate less than five percent of our display area toward alcohol, which is very common for what we do in almost every one of our other locations there. We're, we're, we're just looking for the opportunity to be able to carry mostly beer products. We do sell some wine products as well there, um, and, and a lot of that is, is driven by demand. A lot of customers have come to expect that they would be able to bake a purchase of beer at a, um, at a gas station convenience store, and this is a large one, we offer a lot of products in there, so we do have a lot of people come into our store, obviously for coffee and, uh, other products like that. And we would just like the opportunity to be able to kind of meet, meet the requests of the, uh, customers by being able to, uh, inventory just a small amount of, of, of beer and wine at this particular location. Um, I, I know that there was some conversation here about parking, this, uh, this station has about thirty-four parking spaces, other than parking at the pumps, so many customers, um, probably the majority of customers that do come in and shop in the store are, are typically pumping gas, and they will stop in and they'll go and get a cup of coffee or some other products, some milk and whatever, um, and, and beer to take, uh, with them and take at home. Um, we find that most of our customers are, um, local customers, not people getting on, out on the freeway. Um, I, I think you can maybe just relate yourself, uh, my, my personal experiences, I have two gas stations that I, I go to. One is close to my office, and the other one is close to my home, and those are the places that I go to fill up. The only other time I, you know, fill up is I'm running on empty and I'm coming up here to Camarillo, California, so I, I stop off and I, and I get gas, and usually it's on, on the way there. We don't find that there's a lot of people making purchases of alcohol that are in that particular category, because typically they're going someplace, they're, they're not just casually saying, oh, pull off the side of the freeway and, and go to this particular place to buy beer. Beer that is being sold for off-site consumption typically at a convenience store is to somebody who lives relatively local, and they're making that purchase because they've been at work, and they just simply like to go home and have a beer while they watch, maybe a ballgame or something along those lines. We don't see a lot of issues with, um, people open containers in vehicles, um, and I think that's what maybe you were alluding to. And anecdotally, um, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of, of gas station convenience stores located uh, along freeway on and off ramps, um, that's very, very typical up and down the state of California. And I have never heard, um, uh, the California Highway Patrol indicate that there has been any kind of particular issues with a lot of open containers when they pull people over for speeding. Um, you know, obviously, California Highway Patrol is a state agency, they obviously are concerned about drinking and driving just as, as, as A B C is, and we just haven't heard of widespread issues with that type of thing. Again, a lot of people that are getting on a freeway after they get gas, they're, they're headed someplace. And, um, yes, some people could be residents here, and they could say, oh, I'm going to stop off here when I'm going to, you know, wherever they're, wherever they're driving to, but by and large, most freeway people are, hey, they got to pull over, they got to get gas, use the restroom, and then they're on their way. So that is kind of the, um, with, with gas stations next to freeways, so, you know, certainly, you know, obviously, we're all concerned, uh, about, you know, drinking and driving in open containers, but we just haven't seen, I haven't heard of a widespread issue there from the California Highway Patrol. In terms of, um, concentration levels, I know a lot about this particular subject here, and it's not necessarily a recommendation, what it is, is that the, A B C, um, has a mathematical formula, which is basically taking the number of licenses that are in any particular county and dividing that by the number of people in that county, and then they take each in every census tract, and then they say, okay, well, in this particular census tract, there's, you know, five thousand people in this particular census tract, and, and the average in the county is, is one per thousand. So we can have, you know, five licenses in this particular census tract. There's no real social sciences behind this, it was just a mathematical formula to do, to come up with an authorization level, and, and what it is, is the A B C is authorized to issue up to X number of licenses, in this particular case, I think it's three for the off-sale, without concurrence from the local municipality. I think it's a great policy because obviously, um, there's some communities very, very concerned with maybe a concentration of liquor stores or something like that. But to your point, um, you asked the question, is this a, a typical situation? I will tell you unequivocally, yes, this is very, very common. And the number one reason is, is because the way we do our zoning in cities is we concentrate all of the commercial properties in one, you know, in particular areas. We typically have a separation between commercial properties and residential properties, so oftentimes there's residential, um, census tracts that have a lot of residential in there, and they may be allocated like four licenses, and there's zero licenses in that census tract because there's simply no commercial property, so this is a very common thing, um, all, all of your restaurants, clearly there's thirty-four, um, restaurants that are all kind of concentrated in that area, and I would say, hey, that's, that's good planning, that's the way most communities intended. You're intending to have gas stations and grocery stores all locate in certain commercial areas, so concentration levels in certain areas are certainly, uh, fairly high, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a, it's, it's bad policy, um, by any means. I think most cities, that's the way they're continuing to plan their communities, is by doing that. So, anyway, um, uh, and, and oftentimes you do see this because again, that's just, it's, it's where all your commercial property is. So with that, um, you know, I'm, I'm available for any additional, um, questions that you have. I, I think that this, um, operator, um, United Pacific has a, has a proven track record of being very, very responsible, um, in terms of, you know, their, their selling of this particular product there. They were on a clean operation, and I don't think that there's going to be any, uh, public safety issues. I had a very long conversation with, um, uh, Tom, uh, Miller. Tom Miller is the, uh, police officer that reviews these, and I, I certainly believe he felt very comfortable with our operation, so, thank you very much, and I'm available for any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, any questions?
Do you have one question? Given that you said that you know a lot about concentrations of licenses and how these are, the numbers are doled out.
Yeah.
Can, are you able to tell us about impacts and or concerns with concentrations of off-site liquor licenses um, in commercial areas versus residential areas?
Well, typically, most people don't want liquor to be sold in residential areas. That's a, that's a very common thing, so you, you, you find zoning, most, most zoning ordinances with, you know, residential zone, there, you know, there's no alcohol sales allowed with a C U P with anything. Um, so there is typically a separation, um, based on, you know, just the community desires, that if there is going to be alcohol sold, we want it to be in more of our commercial districts over here as opposed to closer residential. Now, sometimes you will find residential abutting, um, you know, commercial, um, properties, and, and that happens, um, there, and in terms of, um, that, that becomes then a, an, you know, more, a little bit more of a local type of, uh, preference, uh.
So, but are, are there distinct concerns or impacts with off-site sales in residential areas versus commercial areas? Besides preference? It's my understanding that there are studies showing that concentrations in residential areas, for example, there is like higher incidence of, like, um, domestic abuse or, you know, violence, incidents of violence, and I'm wondering whether that, how that applies or doesn't apply in commercial areas.
So, alcohol, you know, that is in residential areas, actually.
Or there's concentrations, is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and, and in terms of concentrating it, I, I'm not aware of any, any, um, particular nexus between, you know, domestic violence and, and the concentration. Yes, I will tell you this, though, you can go into certain parts of areas, um, in, in some communities, and quite honestly, there's a liquor store on every corner, and I, and I don't think that anybody feels that that's a, um, something that is beneficial to those residents by having it, so many of them concentrated there. I would say in Camarillo, that wouldn't be the issue here, I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know of, of, of too many other places that's. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know of of too many other places that sell alcohol immediately close to us, and we're not particularly close to any any residential that I'm aware of.
This is a commercial area. Yeah, I was just wondering, but it doesn't sound like you have background knowledge on those particular, like the social science on it. But I was just wondering, since you indicated that you know a whole lot about it.
Well, I I do, but that particular issue, I I'll be honest, I couldn't really comment intelligently on that.
How about you?
Just two.
Sure.
To verify that, so customers would not be able to grab a beer and drink it while they're waiting for their car to be washed.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
And then I didn't look around the back because there's the park and ride behind the gas station, between the gas station and the freeway. Is there a road to the side or driveway that they can, like if they were picking their car up, getting back to their car, wanted to drive around and pick up something at the convenience store, is there a way to do that without going out on Las Poses? Because they wouldn't be able to double back.
I honestly. Yes, actually, I I no, I do believe that up there in the upper right-hand corner, there is a, those roads intersect. In the upper right-hand corner of there, that's not on the screen there.
Okay.
Those roads do intersect. Now, right now, a portion of that road is closed due to the construction across the street, but it is, those two roads do connect. And yes, we do get park and ride people, you know, that usually when you're in the mornings, they're kind of rushing so they didn't have time to go fill up with gas, right? So they park and they catch their ride and they go, but after they're done, they realize, oh, my 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 tank's rather empty here, so I'll I'll come down here to this particular location and get gas.
Okay, yeah, I didn't didn't check on that, so.
I I drove by it, so I was trying to jog my memory, and no, it it definitely connects up there in the upper right-hand corner.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa, for the overview.
Yeah, they do connect.
How about your, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Yeah, I very much appreciate your overview. It was thorough and addressed pretty much everything we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, and I I had one question for you. You said they they have, the company has 200 stations in California, and of those, do you know how many serve alcohol? Or I mean, not serve it, but.
I believe the number is like 140-something, but it it is over 100 of those. And part of my consulting with them is to get them permits and licenses in in many of their other stores here in the state of California, but they have a quite a bit of experience in selling alcohol.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. So seeing nobody else present, we'll close the public hearing. And Commissioner, discussion or comments?
I don't have any other comments.
No more comments for me.
So I guess we're ready for a resolution.
Okay, resolution number PC 2024-18, resolution of the planning commission of the city of Camarillo, approving a request from 76th gas station for a conditional use permit CUP for the concurrent sale of beer and wine with the service station at 100 Las Poses Road in the commercial plan development CPD zone, further described as CUP 434.
No wait for the reading and move to adopt.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Vander Mullen and seconded by Commissioner Murphy. Please vote.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamont?
Yes.
And Chair Etzel.
Yes.
Okay, so next, I think we're on the discussion items or the director's report? Did you have any, is there any items under discussion? So, okay, so then we go to the director's report.
No items for discussion. This is our last planning commission meeting of the year. Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and under Commissioner comments, I I just wanted to mention that it's been in the paper, but our our former council member, Mike Murray, was killed in an accident a week ago today. And, you know, he served on the council for 38 years and was mayor six times out of that time. And so I'd like to, when we get to the adjournment, adjourn in honor of him, and also to remind people to keep his wife Donna, who's still in in serious condition in the hospital, keep her in your prayers. And so do any other Commissioner comments?
No.
Okay, then we stand adjourned in honor of Mike Morgan.